Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, November 27th Select Board Meeting 2023. I am Mike Moran, the Vice Chair. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon Files and as a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Anybody be recording this personally? Perfect, thank you. After instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room, I'll point it out there, and one to my left. You will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with introductions tonight from my left.
Jacqueline Schnacker, Executive Assistant.
Ron Schneider.
Good evening, Ron Cohen.
Good evening, Katerina Kelibakis.
Good evening, Colin Moizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Kat Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Fantastic. So, tonight I have the honor as filling in as Vice Chair for the Chair, Eric Eldridge is unavailable tonight. And so, we have a promotional ceremony for the Fire Department. And so, I would love to introduce Chief Russell. And we will hand over the meeting to our fire team here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I planned a brief introduction. I'm sure, though, that most, if not all of you have met Brad Biskanet on occasion and worked with him on something. Not only is he a integral member of the department for over 20 years, always stepping up to get involved with any activities and take on responsibilities with the department, but he also is very active in the community as well. Tonight, I'm here to promote Brad to Captain. This is a promotion that has been coming. He is acting in a captain's role as a shift commander at the Fire Department for the last five years. In his current rank, he's Lieutenant, and he has proven his ability to continue in that capacity. And this is just kind of continuing with the strategic plan of the Fire Department and our command structure.
Fantastic.
If the Board doesn't have any questions, we can move on to, I'm going to invite up Brad's wife, Mandy, and Darby, his son, to do the badging.
Fantastic, thank you. Face the crowd.
Did the Board want any pictures?
Guys, want to grab a picture, yeah?
It's up to you. We can come on up, sure.
I'll sign up for $15.
I think the background would be better if we did it with the flags as opposed to the spreadsheet.
Sure.
Depends who you ask.
Yeah, or depends who you ask.
The seal. Chief, come on up. Come be part of the picture. I'm going to move the chairs. Nobody wants to be on my side, Ron? Or Mike? There you go. Make it even, make it even.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Before we resume, we just want to do a shout out to all of our fire personnel, all of our police officers, and all of our dispatchers. We just want to say, thank you so much for your service to our community, because it is fantastic that some of it's volunteer, a lot of it's paid, but we really appreciate all the work that they do for us. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, and we'll be discussing the meeting minutes. These are the regular session meeting minutes for review and approval from November 6, 2023, November 15, 2023, and some executive sessions for November 6, 2023. Do you have any discussion or motion on that?
Do you want me to take them together or separately?
Separately.
I move that the Select Board approve the regular session meeting minutes for November 6, 2023.
Second, is there any discussion?
Aye.
carries 400.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the regular session meeting minutes for November 15, 2023.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries 400.
I move that the Select Board approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for November 6, 2023.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries 400. Thank you. We will now move on to citizens for business time. This is when citizens may address the Select Board on matters of interest to the public for not more than three minutes unless there are more than six speakers. Seeing that we don't have any citizens in the audience, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which are the Town Managers' Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to report that at the recommendation of the Police Chief and the Deputy Chief, I've appointed Cassandra Polito to the position of Communication Specialist with the Tingsboro Police Department. Cassandra comes to us from the Bloxborough Police Department, where she has prior experience as an emergency dispatcher and is also a Tingsboro resident. The final interview included current dispatch staff, and everyone agreed that she had the temperament, the experience, and the personality to complete that critical job. So, we're thrilled to have her join our team. I also wanted to give a shout out to our Executive Assistant, Jackie, who is working on revamping the town's annual report. The focus of the revamp is to present the information in a clear, concise, and efficient manner with an emphasis on highlighting the information that residents will find most important. For many years, we've just used the exact same annual report template, and I think it's become a little bit dated. So, Jackie has been doing a lot of work to find ways to make numbers stand out, percentages stand out, things that residents will find interesting. So, there's an example of a couple pages in your packet, and I'll include that in the public posting of this report tomorrow. But just wanted to give her a shout out. She came up with that concept on her own and has really run with the project. So, very excited to see that come through. A big thank you to Tingsboro resident Patrick Latham, who's been helping residents get their yard waste to the new yard waste site. As a reminder, the site is open until December 9. If weather permits over the winter, we will periodically reopen the site, but it will formally reopen for the season on April 2. We've had success so far. We haven't had any dumping that's not supposed to go on over there. The Highway Department has kept the site very clean and organized, and residents have really taken advantage of it. So, it's working out very well, and I think, you know, we've learned a couple lessons from this early start of the program, which we'll work over the winter to implement for the spring. The DPW Implementation Working Group held its first meeting last week to begin talking about the transition into a DPW. As I noted at a previous meeting, the House of Representatives has already approved the act, and it's now in the State Senate for review and approval. It has not moved since my last update, but they were on holiday vacation, and they're now only in informal sessions. But I expect that it will follow the same approval timeline as the Town Manager Act, which was signed into law in early January. On a less thrilling note, the bids for the Bicentennial Field Irrigation Project were received on November 22 and came in dramatically over budget in terms of both the funding available and the construction estimates that our design consultant put together. I did have a lengthy conversation with one of the bidders, and my understanding from him is that there are components of this project that aren't necessary. They're like the nice-to-haves or kind of overkill, if you will. So, we have a meeting with the design consultant later this week to bring that project back to what their original budget was. The Board may remember, the original cost estimate was $217,000, and we were approved through capital for $250,000. So, I think our lowest bid was $732,000, which far exceeds any of the construction escalation that we've seen. So, we're going to work through that. We have a design. We have an order of conditions. We just need to get it somewhere that is a little more feasible. Last week, I awarded a contract to Key Code Media out of New Hampshire for the Town Hall Security Project. We issued a request for quotes in late October and received only one response. The quote from Key Code is within our budget, and the town has done work with them in the past to our satisfaction. The project will see the installation of nine security cameras here at Town Hall, which currently has none. These cameras will largely cover the parking lot as well as the exterior entrances, and we did slate one of those cameras to be a wireless camera that aims at the new yard waste drop-off site, so we can keep track of who's going in there. We expect work on that project to commence in early January. I've also awarded a contract to Clifton Larson Allen for the town's financial audit services. They're a national firm with lots of municipal clients, including some nearby like Greater Lowell, Chelmsford, Middleton, and more. Their pricing was very comparable to what we anticipated for our FY23 budget, our FY23 audit, and we've expressed to them the need to have this done by March 1 to make sure that we get that submitted in time for free cash. So, they're excited to be a part of the team. The signing director is a Tingsboro resident, so there's a little bit of a local connection there as well. Our media department is working with the Planning and Economic Development Office to put together a short informational video outlining the MBTA Communities Act and our efforts to date. And just as a reminder on that topic, the Planning Department held its first information session on November 8 and will hold a second session on Monday, December 4, here in the Community Room at 7:00 PM. The Recreation Department kicked off the Festival of Trees this past weekend. They are, there are over 130 trees for viewing and several dozen raffles. Those raffles also go for the trees as well. Most importantly, Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be on the Town Common Saturday at 5:30 PM. You can visit tingsbrowma.gov to find the full schedule of remaining events, which continue into Saturday evening. This next item is a response to previous public comment on the matter. I convened a meeting last week of our public safety officials to discuss the potential public safety impacts of the proposed gaming facility at the former Sears location at the Pheasantland Mall. To date, the proposed operator has been very cooperative with our police department and has incorporated all of the chief's recommended revisions into their current security plan. As a part of the permit that they got from Nashua, they are required to get sign-off from both the Nashua Police Chief and the Tingsboro Police Chief. Some of the things that they were worried about include adding additional security patrols and exterior cameras, which they were quick to respond that they would do that. What we're currently looking at is how we would address any potential increase in call volume for our police and/or fire departments. Because the parking lot is largely where crime is committed in casinos, obviously, the insides are fortified security havens. It's the outside that we worry about. One of the things that we've proposed in a letter, which is included in your correspondence this evening for your reference, is that they agree to a meeting one month after they open their operation, so that we can sit down and look at our call data, look at Nashua's call data, and that in the interim, they agree that if Week 1, we've noticed an increase in calls, they would hire a police detail, whether that be from Nashua or Tingsboro. They operate other facilities in Nashua, and Nashua has said that they didn't have any issues at those sites. But obviously, given the unique location of this, right off the highway, with Lowell residents having to come completely through Tingsboro, we will see an increase in volume. So, this is just one way that we can protect the town's interests. Like I said, they've been very amenable to our requests, so I'm optimistic. The other piece I just wanted to address was questions about whether or not the town was entitled to any type of impact fee or payment from the proposed developer, because the parking lot is in Tingsboro. And I know that there was a mail or sent to some residents in Tingsboro that referenced this host-community agreement. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a casino is required, similar to how a cannabis facility is, to enter into a host-community agreement, which addresses a lot of things, some of that being the impact fee, but also security. In this case, the only thing located in Tingsboro is a parking lot. Our zoning bylaws don't allow the Planning Board or the Select Board to dictate what type of uses the parking lot supports. And I've confirmed with Town Council that obviously, any statutes that apply to a Massachusetts gaming facility would not then subsequently apply to a facility licensed by the New Hampshire Gaming Commission. So, we've looked into that. There's no impact fee that we're entitled to. We were involved in the planning process. My understanding is that Mr. Eldridge, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Town Planner, and my predecessor met with officials from Nashua and the proposed developer before the permit was granted in September and had these types of conversations. So, it's a work in progress. I wanted to just relay for folks that have been reaching out with concerns that the Police Chief is involved. They've been amenable to his requests, and we're looking to just get in writing that they're willing to review the status of our call volume after a month, so that we can revisit the security plan if necessary. And that was, that was something that the Board had asked me to look into. So, before I go to the next one, I can see if there's questions from the Board on that.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank Jim Barrett. I guess he received one of the flyers, you know, in the U.S. Mail, and it had a lot of, a lot of misinformation in it. And so, he wanted to make us aware that he had received this. You know, you know, as Colin said, as it relates to security and everything else, we were doing our due diligence, just as we did with Hudson when they were putting in, you know, the big facility there. We're doing our due diligence, and I know they're working hard on it. As Colin also said, you know, one of the things that's said in the flyer is that the Select Board wasn't doing our job because they wanted a host-community agreement with the New Hampshire Gaming Commission. But we live in Massachusetts. We have no authority to do anything as it relates to this commission, just as Nashua or New Hampshire has no authority for Nature's Remedy. That's, that's Massachusetts. So, I just wanted to just make clear, we have done our due diligence on this, as we always do. If any residents have any questions about something like this, they can feel free to give anybody a call here instead of sending a flyer, an anonymous flyer, I guess, out to a whole bunch of people and just creating a whole bunch of misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Colin, just one, one comment. You know, we're going to meet with them a month after the casino opens. I would recommend that we do that like every six months after that, so we, we continue to meet with them. Because, you know, maybe after the first month, it's not going to be indicative of what it's going to be like, you know, six months or a year down the road. So, I think we should continue to meet with them on a regular basis.
Absolutely. Excellent. The last item that I have is just a reminder that Town Hall and the Tingsboro Public Library will open at 11 o'clock this Wednesday to allow our staff to attend an alt-staff training/team building exercise. We've posted this here at Town Hall. It's been up for about a month. It's been on our website, and it's also been on social media as well. So, just a reminder to folks.
Fantastic.
All right. The FY25 capital requests are due November 30. As a reminder, this year we're doing it a little differently. Administration will review the requests initially from departments and then present a recommended capital budget to the Capital Asset Management Committee for further review and approval. The town is working to submit our annual Green Communities Report by the December 1 deadline in order to remain eligible for future DOR, DOER grants. The town, in partnership with NIMCOG, did receive a grant from the state to provide technical assistance from the green, for the green communities' annual reporting requirements, and this will be for two years. And then, lastly, the Town Manager awarded the Police Station HVAC Installation Project to AFingundas, a local company, which was the only contractor to submit a quote on the project. So, good news, the town expects the entire project to be covered by a State 911 grant as well as a MassSave rebate. So...
Fantastic.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much for the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager Reports. I'll move on to Agenda Item 5, which is new business. Oh, exciting and new. The Presentation on the FY24 Budget and FY25 Revenue Forecast. Very fortunate to have David here tonight to walk us through this.
Good evening. We should do this more often.
Yes.
Nice getting a mic in front. Usually, you guys don't allow me to talk. So, we're going to look at two spreadsheets here. It's been a beautiful backdrop for the last hour or so. We're going to start with the forecast, all right? That's a little more high level. This is kind of how we begin developing a budget. It's scary to say that we are starting the FY25 process. It feels like we just started FY24. Now, so what this does is we're looking back five years. These are all the, the actual revenues put into, you know, categories that we can break down into local receipts. You know, we have the property taxes. Tax liens are one of those things that isn't really budgeted, but you can see everything that's in the tan squares. That's going to be your local receipts. And then, this says in the middle here, you see like the bond premiums and proceeds. That's going to be from our borrowings that we've done over the years. TMS feasibility is for the middle school, and as you can see, that's starting to ramp up. Now, I, I'll go through, what I did was, in the middle here is the, there's a five-year growth, and the model, sometimes it looks a little wonky when you just subtract, you know, the fifth year from the first year. Because, you know, for instance, one that really sticks out is the impact fee, right? Something that we're not even getting going forward. But I just want you to, when you're looking at the model and thinking, damn crazy, it's really just our last payment that we received in FY23 was for $400,000. And then, the initial one that we got right way back in the day was just $25,000. So, that's where you're going to get this obscene growth right here. But as you see going forward, using the model, it just takes the FY23 amount, uses the percentage, the average percentage over five years, and just multiplies that going forward, saying, if we follow along that trend. However, you also have to apply what we know, right? So, it doesn't matter that that says 1.6 billion. That would be a dream, but we know in the 2024 budget that that's $0. And that's an easy one to go forward in 2025 as well, because we know that those agreements have been found ineligible. So, just going down, some that we're familiar with, again, going back to the property taxes. It makes a lot of sense that we're looking at 3% there, 2.5% is going to be your prop 2.5, and then the new growth is added in. Tax liens are kind of all over the place. You actually don't even budget those. The DOR doesn't allow you to put anything there. It's just kind of as they go. Motor vehicle exercise remains pretty steady over, over five years. It's surprising that there isn't more growth in this. Other excise, I know sometimes people are kind of wondering what this, this is. This is your meals and hotels taxes, okay? You can see that there was a pretty big lull in here, not surprisingly. Those were pandemic. That's, you're going to see a pretty good hole right in the middle here, because, you know, March of 2020, the world got a little crazy on us there. The other department revenue is one that has really grown over the years, and that is direct to do with the pandemic, believe it or not, because what that is, is police details are actually under like a state of emergency rate, and that really bumped it up. So, earnings on investments, it was real good five years ago. We all know how interest rates have, they sunk real low there for a minute, and then they bounced back. Cemetery revenue, library revenue, pretty steady. You'll see the cherry sheet. You know, that's the funding that comes from the school. The five-year average is really only going up 1%. That's not a significant amount to rely on year over year. You'll see that between the FY24 budget that we approved at Town Meeting and the 25 projection, I really did, I just level funded it, because you never know. It might actually go down a little bit. So, it's not, nothing you really want to rely on going up. The rentals, that goes up a couple percent each year. And then, you'll see my overall general fund receipts is just for 2025 is going up 3% in totality. These other sources are, let me just see what there... The other sources then are excluded debt are what make up the total amount, but they're kind of in and out. You know, it, they bump up your tax levy limit, but then you're spending the debt anyway. So, it's not necessarily anything that hits the general fund directly. So, again, the 2024 budget here, this is the amount that was approved at the annual Town Meeting. For the 2025 projection, this is just the prop 2.5 plus $400,000 of new growth. Just to kind of give an idea, new growth in 2021, it was 546,468, 300,023 hurt, but it bounced back last year to 433. So, 400 is a, you know, it's that conservative approach that we try to use on our budget. We would much rather receive more than kind of reacting to the, when we had 450 in our budget and in actuality it was 300, then you have to kind of adjust to that. That's what we're trying to avoid. So, how do I use this? You use the five-year average, and you see these percentages, but again, you have to use the knowledge that we have. Does it seem like it's going to trend that way? What did last year's actuals come out to? Does it feel like, the DOR requires us to kind of use last year as our baseline, and then anything above last year, you kind of have, need a reason, right? And so, we try to, it's going to, year over year, the, there isn't a whole lot of changes besides, again, the property tax that we're allowed to increase by 2.5 and then...
Mr. Chair, as it relates to growth, you know, I, I know, I know we've looked at, you know, particular projects, you know, looking at the growth in previous years. Some of those have kind of warmed down. We have a few others that are starting up, or at least one other big one. I'd like to get a little bit more detail on how you're coming up with these numbers, because I think the growth numbers is one of the more important ones. And as we can see, fluct, can fluctuate quite a bit. So, if we could just get a little bit more detail on that, that, you know, your next presentation or whatever, so we can hopefully refine that a little bit more.
Certainly. I feel like in the past, we might have been a little loose with how we projected the new growth, and we're, it's like, oh, we get the 450 every year. I can say that administration and myself, working with the Town Planner, and we kind of were like, like you just said, hey, can we look at these projects that we've kind of been saying for four years that we're just kind of relying on? Is this actually going? Is there new projects? And I think that we have, that 400,000, again, is just a conservative amount there, but we've decided to, you know, dig in a little deeper, and I can certainly get you that information.
Yep. Would love to see the, share the details with us. Would be great. Thanks.
So, again, this is kind of a higher level, using the five years, the average percentages, and then kind of molding it with the next spreadsheet that we do. You might remember this one from last year. This is a trending tab that I had developed, and I presented it to the DOR, and they really liked this for how we came up with our, the budget that we do present. What this is doing, it's a trend tab, okay? So, it's saying that as of the end of the first quarter, for the amounts you're looking at, what percentage do we usually have of this bucket for the year? You know, it's supposed to eliminate timing. That's kind of the whole idea, is because it's much easier to compare year over year when you can eliminate that. Now, so what this is doing is saying, for instance, real estate, personal property, you know, it's going to be right around a quarter. So, what I'll do is I take the, these are based on actuals, because we obviously know what happened in '22 and '23. And then, for '24, this is based off our projected budget. What I do is I average out those three years, and we say, all right, so this is where we generally should be. And then, I use the money that we've received, and if this is where we should be, what do we project to, right? And so, we use this on a monthly basis to, especially during, during budget time, to adjust, because it's going to flow, and there's going to be, oh, this is, do we believe this is actually going to come in this high? Is, did we just get a payment early? Do we, are we looking at a payment late? And so, so we use this to really just come out with, right, at the projected amount. That's kind of where we're starting the discussion for the new budget. That's kind of where we're starting the discussion for the new budget. Then, so once we have the projected amount, which again is based off the averages of the prior years, we go to the budget that we currently have to see if that is aligned with our expectations. Now, there's a lot of negatives up here, not to be scared. If you look at the local receipts, I'll bury the lead here. It looks like it's a million dollars short, but if you, it's a pretty simple, so Canvas excise doesn't look like we have a payment on the accounting system yet, but I do believe that we have received a payment. Similarly with interest, we've certainly received interest for the first three months. While I'm supposed to be eliminating timing, this is a finance timing, we'll, we'll call it. So those amounts do exist. We have received money. So I, I do not worry about either of those. That's about, you know, four hundred and ten thousand dollars we're looking at right there. Those are pretty, the steadier amounts. Canvas excise is not anything that we are worried about not receiving. It's been trending up for as long as it's been in its existence. Now, this amount, remember, this is just the twenty-five percent that's going to the general fund. The other seventy-five percent goes right to the road stabilization. So that never shows in our budget at any time, any, it doesn't throw off any projections or anything. It's just completely moved and kind of, all right? Now, so the other half million dollars is just the cherry sheet. And the cherry sheet, I mean, they come up with the final numbers. That's where these, the budgeted amount comes from. That's, it's already put on, say, the tax rate recap that we, they do at this time every year. So we will receive that much money. So the fact that it's short trending right now is not a worry either. Okay, so again, the, the five-year was just to kind of see how things trend year over year. Can we expect it to go up? Does it, has it been going down or? And then this is kind of a lower level, kind of in the, the details a little bit, month by month, adjusting during the year.
Fantastic. Any, any questions or discussion from the board?
Chair, well, thank you for the presentation. And as you said, you know, you're doing a lot of five-year, five-year averaging and then, you know, projecting the things that we know into this budget. And we know this is a continuing, you know, document that you're going to keep working on here. What's kind of your next step? And when do you feel would be a good time to present to us again? When you, a little more refined numbers, once you keep moving forward?
Well, I mean, these get updated monthly. I can certainly update you along the way. I'm happy to come back. I believe that we'll be meeting in, you know, early next year, right, in January. And leading up to the budget season, I believe we, we all hang out a lot and break it down. Now, I, I will give the new administration a shout out here. I believe with revenue, they, a lot, same thing with new growth. They, they've been really diving in and asking me some detailed questions on where these numbers are coming from as opposed to just using high-level percentages and kind of bury it off last year. We're going to incorporate in our department discussions with the department heads. Hey, what do you think is going to happen with these revenues this year? Can we tell the DOR to expect more? Is there something we can be doing to be creating new revenue? Because I think that, you know, their point is that year over year, we just are happy for what we've received. And because of that, we can just rely on the same amount every year. But maybe there's some room for some growth or better understanding. So within, we're going to be starting that in the month of December. We're going to be talking to the department heads, going through their budgets. Like I said, so I think early in January, we'll be meeting again and then I'm happy to come hang out with you.
Yeah, I think that Mr. Eldridge would love to do that on a monthly basis, starting in January.
And Mr. Chair, if I may just add, I think, you know, one of the main reasons why we wanted to get David in front of the board tonight is we are, like David said, departments will be receiving instructions from us early next week with the request paperwork so we can start that process. We wanted to take this as an opportunity to kind of publicly set the expectation for the FY twenty-five budget and kind of show where we've been and where we think we're going. And to really make sure, like David was talking about, that we're being much more intentional about the numbers that we use. Tingsboro has been very conservative about our, our revenue estimates. And that's resulted in us having strong budget years, our strong bond rating being reaffirmed. And so this is kind of our attempt at taking that to the next step to say we want to be more intentional about not only what we think we're, but we're going to get areas where we may be missing out on some revenue. And then making that translate much more directly into the actual budgeting process as opposed to a kind of cut and paste cookie cutter process. And, and to Mr. Cohen's point, I think certainly at one of your January meetings, before we start looking at tri board and things like that, having David come back. And by then, we'll have received department requests. So we'll also know what the implications of our conservative forecast on the revenue will be. But really, I think, given the financial situation of the world and we're seeing it in other communities, fortunately not here in Tingsboro yet, we think it's important that we're regularly providing the board an update on where we stand today, where we think we're heading. That way, it's a collaborative process where the board is able to provide input and, and kind of know what we're expecting.
Yeah, I also think it's a very good opportunity to set realistic expectations with the department heads and also with the community, right? It's a published budget, transparent, and we're trending and tracking all the, all the way through.
Sure. And in the interim months, certainly, we update this, you know, it, it's a live spreadsheet. So it's, these numbers right here aren't going to do us any good in two months because everything's going to be updated as they go, right? So I can share that information with you. I can give you, I know myself that I like to go home and read spreadsheets over the Christmas holidays, so I can provide you a spreadsheet before anybody goes on vacation.
There you go. All is in favor of receiving a spreadsheet over the holiday vacation?
I mean, I, I was sending Colin emails at eleven PM on Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, hard at work. We appreciate it.
That's what I like to do.
Yeah, yeah. We appreciate the hard work and the effort and the transparency and the progress that this has. Any other further discuss, discussions or questions on this part of the presentation tonight?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. It's a fun one. We move on to.
Oh, I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may real quick, I think David wanted to provide a quick update on the finance department.
Yes.
Is that what you were saying?
Finance department. I don't see that on the agenda. Let's do it.
He was kicking me out and then he puts me back on the mic. Yeah, so just a couple of small items. Like Colin had mentioned earlier, we were going to go with CLA. They're going to be our new auditors. We're going to be starting prelims soon. We, they are under the full expectation of, long before we asked for even their quote, that they would have to turn this audit around pretty quick. Because, you know, free cash was a challenge in October. We have been working with the departments to get training. We've brought in a firm to help us with workflow. We have people looking into the, the cash book and everything just to get a fresh start, to kind of start over and get everything clean going forward. And I think that there, we're doing a lot of, it's a little micromanaging currently, but we're getting, it, it's really positive. And I think everybody's embracing it. And so, yeah, that's it. We're just kind of, we're all looking at that March deadline and not panicking at all.
That's good news.
David, as a, as a result of, of working with that firm to look at sort of the cash and, and the cash book, are any new processes coming out of that or is it?
Certainly. So it, it's kind of a three-pronged attack, if you will. So we have, we had a third party go in, it's going to get a little in the weeds, but start their own cash book and just make sure everything was correctly put in there and on the Jill, right? So we're all clean that way. Second was getting training for how they did that, right? You know, I've been here three years and there's been, you know, a couple bodies in that, in the treasury seat. And I think a lot of the times that we are learning our new positions, we're kind of failing to get outside of the doors, like call it, like teaching, you know? I don't, I don't think that our last treasurer kind of gave too much to the current treasurer, right? And so we want to give her the support to get the cash book correctly going and give her the confidence of that, you know? And then the third part is exactly what you said. We are bringing in from the same firm, someone who had actually been the interim or the, not interim per se, but the acting treasurer for us, Eric Kincherf. Now, so he knows Tingsboro, right? And he's been doing this for, he's got his own firm. He's been doing this for twenty years. And he's going to come in, see our processes and see how the workflow is going and who's handling everything. And kind of see if there's a, you know, we have bottlenecks or, you know, just the, again, that third part of the equation to kind of, you know, we get the clean start, we get the training and the support necessary and then the correct workflow. And I think it, you know, it's a recipe for success going forward, so.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
We appreciate it. Further questions or clarity? All right, move on to new business twenty twenty-four local license approvals.
Okay. So it's that time of year again when we ask the select board to renew all local licenses issued by the board to various businesses throughout the town. These categories of licenses being renewed this evening include our class one, two, and three auto dealer licenses, weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses, automatic amusement device licenses, and common vicular licenses. These licenses are annual licenses. They run from January first through December thirty-first of each year. And the full list of renewals is attached to this memo. At a high-level overview is that the board is being asked to renew all licenses that are currently in existence with the exception of the common vic and entertainment licenses issued to Tingsboro Sports Center at the eighteen Progress Ave location. Mr. Darryl Wickens has informed our office that he will not be renewing licenses at this location. The location is no longer open. Sun City Variety at seventeen Palm Road will not be renewing their common vic license. And additionally, Candy's Cakes has informed the Board of Health that they have closed the business and therefore we have not received their common vic renewal. As always, these licenses are required to submit a completed renewal application, updating their information, the required insurance documents, and the appropriate fees. A breakdown of the fees is below. And all of these renewals are contingent on our tax office confirming the tax compliance and receipt of any missing documents and fees.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I believe there is a motion in this draft?
A move that the select board approve the twenty twenty-four local license renewals as presented contingent on a final tax verification and receipt of all required paperwork and fees.
Second. Any further discussion on this? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries four zero zero.
And you will have those licenses to sign after our next meeting when we do the alcohol licenses.
Fantastic. Thank you. The next one is the FY twenty-five senior tax work-off appointments. I'll ask Kat to present this one.
Thank you, Kathleen.
I am pleased to present the select board with the candidates for appointments to the FY twenty-five senior tax work-off program. After being appointed tonight, the participants will be connected with their supervisors to set a schedule and can begin work as soon as January second. The applicants will be eligible for a property tax abatement up to fifteen hundred if they complete a hundred and fifteen hours of work in their applicable department. We received fifteen applications for fifteen different positions. Of the applicants, eight qualified for the financial hardship priority and one was a new participant. The candidates are below along with their assignments. And if the board has any questions, happy to answer.
Mr. Chair, no questions. Just a, a great program. See a lot of these same names every year. And I know a lot of these people and, you know, they're invested in whatever department they're working for. And a lot of them work a lot more hours than they actually have on here because they just enjoy what they do and they enjoy the relationships that they've formed with these different departments. And just a great program. Only a comment, no questions.
Any further comments or questions?
No questions, no.
A question. So you, we have fifteen applications, fifteen positions and two, three, four, five, six, seven people being appointed? Oh, there's a second. They put them right next to each other. Got it, got it. Makes sense. Thank you very much.
Cheers. All right. Is there a motion for this or is this just the appointments?
Yep, there's a motion.
A move that the select board appoint the senior tax work-off participant, participants for fiscal year twenty-five as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries four zero zero. We shall move on to the participation and the PACE program.
All right. This is, this seems more complicated than it is, but I will answer all the questions afterwards. Including your packet this evening is a wide variety of information regarding the Property Assessed Clean Energy, otherwise known as PACE program, which is run by Mass Development. The program allows commercial and industrial property owners in the state to access financing for energy improvements through special betterment assessments on their property tax bill. The funding comes directly from Mass Development and their partners. And the municipality's role is being responsible for placing a betterment on the property and collecting the repayment, thus sending it over to the state. The municipality would add the betterment to the property tax bill and quarterly, the state will bill us for that amount. So we kind of act like the middleman. The program has been adopted by seventy other municipalities since its inception. Neighboring communities such as Burlington and Lowell have adopted the program. We began inquiring about this program as we worked to bring a potential medical device company to the ninety-three Kendall Road development. They've expressed an interest to our economic development director of having a very sustainable and energy-efficient building. And this is one way that they can do that and offset some of the costs early on. In reviewing the program, we've confirmed with Mass Development and Town Council that all of our municipalities and collections would take precedence over the betterment. Our first concern, of course, was if Colin stopped paying taxes and we finally got a payment, we wanted to make sure we made ourselves whole before we had to pay the state. That is in fact the case. In fact, even if we, if we have a sewer lien on the property, sometimes the water districts will ask us to put liens on it. All of that gets taken care of before the state's lien for not paying back the PACE betterment. The steps to joining, joining the program are simple. The board would just need to vote this evening to adopt the resolution, which is included in your packet, which would authorize me to enter into an agreement with Mass Development. If at any time we decide to terminate, we could do so with sixty days' notice so long as we fulfilled our obligations. I want to make it abundantly clear that this is an optional program, that a developer would have to go through a series of steps to join. It's not, you know, something that someone could simply check a box. They'd essentially be being approved for financing through the state and we would be the, the collector. If the town chooses to join and this developer comes to Tingsboro and is approved through the program, we would work with our finance department, our IT department, and the state to make sure that our financial software is recording it all correctly. But the short of it is that this would allow the program in Tingsboro and agree that we're okay being the middleman to collect the payment.
All right, open up the questions?
Mr. Chair, you know, I heard voluntary, loud and clear, optional. So every commercial, industrial business, it's up to them. But you also said they have to go through, I'll say hoops in order to make sure they qualify for this. Does the town have anything to do with that or is it just the state?
Just the state.
Okay. So the state would go through all the paperwork. They pretty much do everything. All we are is, we just do the, the betterment and just.
Correct.
The middleman, like you said.
Once they're approved, we would get a notice from the state saying, you know, Colin's property at Zero Main Street was approved for a betterment. Here's the amount. Here's the terms of their repayment. We would put that onto their property bill and that's how we'd collect it.
Okay, thank you.
Just to further clarify, so it's really no major burden to our teams at the town offices to add this to the property bill and expect payment from the business?
Yeah, not really, especially since this isn't something that's going to finance like the replacement of LED lights. So the pool of people who would be eligible to participate are really going to be your larger developers and new developments. We've never had an inquiry about the program before. So if we, if this developer came to Tingsboro and participated, I could not imagine that we'd have more than just them on it. But if we had more, once we add it to our collection system, it's already there.
Fantastic. All right, so I believe we need to entertain a motion.
A move that the select board adopt the PACE resolution as presented, authorizing the town of Tingsboro to participate in the Property Assessed Clean Energy PACE program.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero is the vote. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero is the vote. And I'll move on to ratify contract finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is a quick, simple one here, this contract was approved by the select board at a previous executive session. It is a housekeeping item to clarify the promotion of Mr. Andrews back in March. It's already been signed by him, but executive session law is required that anything you approve in executive session be publicly ratified before the board can sign it, so all I need tonight is a motion to ratify the contract, and Jackie has the hard copy for you all to sign.
Fantastic, so can I get a motion to ratify?
So this is, Mr. Chair, so this changed roles, just further defines roles, responsibility, no fi- nothing changes financially.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure the residents are aware of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Couldn't have that during the discussion point, but, so can I get a motion, please?
I move that the select board ratify the employment agreement between the town of Tingsboro and David Andrus as presented.
Second. Is there any further, further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four zero zero. Congratulations. All right, we shall move on to the next order of business, oh, the select board's reports. That's my lap, Mr. Schneider?
I have nothing this month, Mr. Chair.
Just, just quickly, you know, to all residents, you know, if you need any further clarification, you have any questions, you know, please really feel, reach out to us, you know? It's really hard when you see misinformation going out, and it goes way too far, and, you know, and you start getting different calls from people, and it's harder to corral. You know, we're, we're open to, to answer any questions, we're going to have differences of opinions, once you find that out, that's fine, but let's just get the right information out there to, to the residents, thank you.
I don't know how anybody could possibly miss the plethora of beautiful Christmas lights out there, but if you did, just a reminder that the Festival of Trees is going on next weekend, does it start Thursday or Friday? Friday, I think?
Thursday.
So Thursday?
Through Saturday, right?
Correct, through Saturday.
And I think they have Sunday.
Sundays, they had Sunday this past week.
They had Sunday this past week, okay, so Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, check out the Festival of Trees, there's a lot of beautiful trees up, as well as gift baskets and fun things like that, and as Colin mentioned earlier, I think they're having Santa and Mrs. Claus on Saturday, which is fantastic, so get out, just meet your neighbors, support some local businesses, and have fun.
That's fantastic, yes, and I went there last night, so it was a wonderful time with the family. I believe we have a need for an executive session?
Yep. I move that the select board move into executive session for exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, all collective bargaining units, as well as exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, all non-union positions.
Second. This will be a roll call vote, so I'll take that roll call vote, Mr. Schneider?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
It is four zero zero, and we will adjourn outside of that session.
Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the open meeting for tonight.